Good evening. I'm Jeff Vaughan, and thank you so much for joining us here on this Meet the Candidates forum. In just one week, every registered voter in California will receive that important ballot in the mailbox for the next election coming up on June 7. Well, the most important races this year is for that open seat in the LA County Board of Supervisors, District 3. And that is open because Supervisor Sheila Kuehl has decided to retire. So let's take a look at the map of District 3. It is the 3rd district, which includes the San Fernando Valley and runs along the coastline from Malibu to Venice. It also includes all the west side cities and neighborhoods going as far inland as Hollywood. And join me now is our reporter Lori Perez, who is covering this race for CBS2, KCAL 9, and CBS News, Los Angeles. Lori?
Well, Jeff, the five supervisors who run LA County are some of the most powerful leaders in all of California. They control a budget that is bigger than the budget of 25 states, and they have enormous power to impact the quality of life for 10 million people. But in LA County today, there are issues, lots of them.
Rising crime. A homeless crisis that only gets worse while we spend even more each year to address it. A housing crisis, not enough apartments or homes for hundreds of thousands of people. The price is too high for everyone.
People really have nowhere to go.
Few places on earth have so many who have so much, living side by side with people who struggle to get by every day. And the growing number of voices calling for racial equality. It is a critical time for the people of LA County. What's happened to the quality of life here, many believe, is heartbreaking and unacceptable.
Because we need to fix LA? I'm really frustrated, frankly. I mean, I consider myself a progressive, but I'm outraged with what's happening in this town, and I think everybody else is too.
State Senator Henry Stern says he feels it too. That's why he's running for the LA County Board of Supervisors.
It's no surprise to us. Often, you know, we'll see a headline, you know, that Los Angeles is making headlines, doing something that we did six months or a year prior. We're not waiting for anyone to come and save us. We're stepping up and doing the work.
West Hollywood Councilmember and former mayor Lindsay Horvath says she's found some of the answers running that city, while State Senator Bob Hertzberg says politics is about character.
You tell the truth? Do you get it done? Do you work around the clock to make it happen? Do you show up in the community to show respect to voters and listen to them, even if you disagree? Those are what's critical. None of that comes out in an election. The delta be the difference between the sales job and the governing job. That is night and day.
To help you make your decision, CBS News, Los Angeles, is proud to present this special live, one-hour community event, Meet the Candidates for LA County Supervisor. So here in the next hour, we'll be discussing the top issues in this race with three of the people running for that office. We're going to ask a series of questions of the candidates, and each will get one minute to answer. We'll also allow additional time for those individual responses if needed. So let's meet those candidates. First up is Henry Stern. We may not have him with us at this hour. We understand he was in a committee meeting that has since adjourned. We're told that he is running to get to this forum today, so we will have him when he joins us. He's been in the state senate for six years, representing Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, Calabasas, Malibu, and parts of Santa Clarita.
And next is Councilmember Lindsay Horvath. She has served nine years on the West Hollywood City Council, two as the mayor, and also runs her own marketing company focused on the entertainment industry.
And also is joining us is Senator Bob Hertzberg. He is the Majority Leader in the California Senate as well, and was previously a member of the State Assembly for eight years, including two as Assembly Speaker. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. By the way, it was six years in the Assembly.
Okay. Thank you so much for that correction. I appreciate it.
It felt like eight, because I had the energy.
And just to mention that we are waiting for State Senator Henry Stern to join us. When he does, he will come right into the fold.
Yeah, we were in the committee together. We were in the Energy Committee together, getting at the Liso Canyon bill, so he's hustling back to his house.
Okay, sounds good. So let's start with this, with the two candidates that we have with us at this hour. We want to start with that recent study released by UCLA. It was one that was very telling, I should say. In fact, the report shows the quality of life has dipped to its lowest level in seven years. According to the index, high prices, homelessness, rising crime, and health concerns were the main reasons why this is so low. And I think it's fair to say there's a lot of emotions that come with this study. People that we've talked to, people that we see, that we report on, they're scared. They're fed up. They're angry, and a lot of them have had enough. So we'd like to know if you understand their concerns. Do you hear them? And are you the right person to address all of these issues? Since we're waiting for Senator Stern, let's go to Councilmember Lindsay Horvath with your response.
Thank you very much. I share a lot of concerns that people have expressed, and I've seen them firsthand in my own community and in my work at the local level. And so that's why we've had to meet people where they are, to deliver services and support, to create housing opportunities, to address the homelessness crisis. As was said, I'm not waiting for anybody. We have to step up and take care of ourselves. We've come together as a community during this time of crisis. As mayor during COVID, as president of California Contract Cities Association, I was the liaison between the communities, our local communities, to make sure that we got the services and support that we needed. I saw where the county succeeded. I saw where the county failed, and I'm prepared to step up and do better.
And now let's go to Senator Bob Hertzberg.
Thank you so, thank you very much, Lori. I really appreciate it. Yeah. I mean, what Zev Yaroslavsky said on that, he says, "The dam has burst." And he's right. I feel it in Van Nuys where I live. I feel it all across the county when I talk to folks. It's one of the reasons why I'm running, to try to bring hope back to the process. I talk to people who won't go to the shopping mall because they're concerned about a smash and grab. That's a terrorist act, not just on the people stealing a $500 purse. That's the easy part. On the shop keeps having their business, on people who won't go to the shop because their public safety's so important. Driving down the street, my significant other's parents live in Hollywood. You go into those underpasses, it's completely understandable, and it's horrible. And it's the exact reason that I'm running. And I'm running because, you know, I bring together coalitions, and rather than just talk about stuff, I quietly work around the clock to make it happen. Because I'm telling you, if we don't get it done, they should throw us all out of office, and we should take responsibility. And that's what I'm going to do.
Really appreciate you, Bob, for taking to that one minute. And we are going to wait for Senator Stern to come into the fold here. So let's just stay on this topic until he can join us. We'll give it just another round here. If he doesn't join us, we'll move on to something else. So.
He should be here pretty quickly.
Yeah. Is he with us? Okay, so.
Here he comes.
There we go. Senator Stern, thank you so much for joining us. We understand you were working in a committee meeting. We thank you for making this at that very last minute. I just want to reiterate the question that I asked the other two candidates here about that UCLA quality of life report. It's dipped to its lowest level in seven years. Are you the person that can bring this up? Do you understand the concerns of the voters and constituents in LA? Do you hear them? What's your answer?
I believe I hear them, because I am one of them. I walk down the street in the San Fernando Valley and watch someone having a psychotic break, you know, in front of my house, in front of my neighbors' houses. You know, you can throw statistics all you want at the people of LA and tell them everything's fine, and, you know, crimes are at a certain level, or homelessness, we're doing everything we can. But the fact is, the reality on the ground, LA voters know that things are not okay, and that this is broken. And I'm just glad you're having this debate tonight to focus on the county, because a lot of folks look at the mayor's office as the solution. But if the county doesn't step up, we're all going to be in trouble. So I'm hoping that my lived experience as somebody who's, you know, taking care of a seven-month-old and a 94-year-old knows what it's like to deal with county services hands-on, and knows what it's like when those services really don't work, that that frustration and that anger that people feel about that dysfunction is something I share. Hopefully, that makes me worthy.
Thank you very much, Senator. Well, of all of the urgent issues that Jeff mentioned, the most pressing, the one we hear the most often about, is the homeless crisis. A recent audit by the board found the current county and city approach to be a failure. The head of LSA just resigned. The county is spending billions, but the unhoused population is only increasing. And my question would be, do we need a fundamentally different approach? And if so, what might that look like? And we'll begin with Senator Stern.
Thank you, Lori, for that question. I do think we need a fundamentally different approach. You know, right now, we've been stuck at the county level, where we've been having to choose between a housing-first policy and abundant services. Essentially, the county has been sitting on mental health services dollars, literally not spending them. We audited the county about two and a half years ago and found $980 million sitting in the coffers of mental health services dollars that should have been put to work on the streets, providing street-level medicine, providing care. And instead, that funding bottleneck, because folks said, unless you've got that permanent supportive housing built for that individual, then we're not going to deploy any services. And I disagree with that approach. I think we can do housing first, but services right alongside it. And, you know, you're seeing this fallout, not just you losing LSA, but you're losing, the head of Department of Mental Health is now gone, just resigned this past week. You're seeing leadership attrition throughout the ranks, and I think it's just a total a total failure and a culture of failure that has to change. So, you know, I think that audit revealed gaps, but now we need to step in and say, housing first yet, but step zero is abundant services, and that means care on the streets. That means care courts, which the governor's measured through today. That means taking on some tough issues around people who can't help themselves, and when you need to compel care. And some of those issues that we've kicked down the road.
Senator Stern, thank you so much. One minute now to Councilmember Horvath.
Thank you so much. This is the question, and you know it's bad when the executive director of LSA says it doesn't work. She's been at the job. We know that it's not working. We see it on our streets. We do need a fundamentally different approach, and that's what we've done in my community. We meet people where they are. We contract with services and support. We work with the sheriff's department and on the law enforcement and safety side. But we lead with care. We lead with clinically-trained social workers who are able to diagnose people on the spot and get them into the care that they need, rather than jailing them simply for being unhoused. We hire people who themselves were formerly unhoused to go out and do this outreach work so people can see that it's a system that can be trusted. We get them into housing services treatment. We provide them transportation to be able to get there. We can't expect our most challenged residents to navigate four departments to get what they need from LA County. It just isn't going to work that way.
All right, and now we'll turn it to Senator Bob Hertzberg for his response.
Thank you. You know, one of the motivations for me for running for this job is we just keep shoveling money. The public has done it with taxes and bonds. We in Sacramento, we just did a meeting today, billions and billions of dollars yesterday with the governor, with care courts, billions and billions of dollars. It's all about the implementation. It's all about the system and management. So we give the money to the county, and it just doesn't work. I just want to put a little more dimension on the point about the director, executive director of LSA. She just leaves. She says, "I can't house people. The system doesn't work." We had a blue ribbon commission where the city didn't participate, and they say we're going to take 39 months to solve the problem. I'm sorry, the person who's the 3rd district is somebody who represents the city, unlike South Bay and others, and needs to be building those bridges with the city and make it happen. So it's just dysfunction. The answer to your question specifically, is there a fundamentally different approach? Yes. Politicians have to take responsibility. There needs to be a board. Elected officials need to be put on that board, take responsibility, and throw them out if it doesn't work. But this idea of everybody pointing fingers, we have a bunch of money we just sent from the state. The county applied, the city applied, and the Joint Powers are supporting it. You've got to have your head examined for that. It's crazy. It's just chaos. And we want to bring, I certainly am trying to bring that level of dimension to it to help that process and deal with the implementation so it's done properly.
You know, there may be many people who support all of the things that you mentioned in theory, you know, having a care-first approach and abundant care and working on implementation. But what do you say to the people who are asking, "Well, what about the guys who are in tents in front of my house tonight? What about the line of RVs in my neighborhood this week? And the RV in front of my kid's school that we pass every day now?" What can you say to them?
Who's that question for?
And we'll begin again with Senator Stern.
I would say, go to, call LA County and go on the HopLA app and see if it works. And if you get the same response I got, which is, "I'm sorry, no one's here to take your call right now, and we'll get back to you soon," let us know, and document all those experiences, and put that together, and let, put that anger to somewhere constructive and weigh in on this race. Because, look, we have to triage right now, and we're going to be doing emergency actions right now to get mobile psychiatric units deployed in LA. I was working with Supervisor Hahn on a recent motion to go from 30 people working in those mobile psychiatric units to 185 in the next month. So that's direct work that ideally, if you pick up the phone, someone will answer. Right now, that's not going to happen. Look, I know that's not going to solve the issue. A friend of mine, living right on LA River, just had a baby, has an encampment in front of his house right in Canoga Park, has been calling for months with no response, because the person who's there doesn't want to go into Home Key, and doesn't want to go into Room Key, and doesn't want to take that service. We've got to actually get in there and move forward these emergency measures, and take power in our hands at the state level. I mean, I really, at this point, we can't wait on county.
Senator Stern, thank you, and Councilmember Horvath, your response.
I don't think Sacramento is the solution here. I think that locally-based approaches are what is needed. And I think the county needs to work with and support the leadership of cities and leadership of neighborhoods, leadership of community-based organizations who are delivering these services, and they just need more help. Rather than reinventing a new system that is sucking up resources that aren't being directly funneled to the places where they're needed, we need to work with the community-based organizations that are providing culturally competent care, that are meeting people where they are, and make sure that they are funded enough to deliver the results that people are looking for. That's what we do in my community. We work with organizations that do have county contracts that could use a lot more funding and support, and they can be the replacement for a system that isn't working.
And let's go finally to Senator Bob Hertzberg. I just want to remind you guys, you're doing a great job with the one minute. We'll do follow-up after this for about 30 seconds. So Bob, take a minute just to explain.
Yeah, look, I think that the answer is, who picks the, where do you call? We're about to have a 988 system. I checked into it. Looks like it's pretty good. Second, when you call, who shows up? It's not somebody with a badge and handcuffs. It's got to be somebody who's trained. And right now, the amount of money that Senator Stern talked about is important, but it's not even close. I talked to the chief of police of Los Angeles and others. There's a police element. There's the sheriff, there's the county mental health, and then there's the sheriff's department, all of which are highly understaffed. There's nobody showing up. And then thirdly, where do you take them? And someone may want to make an argument about the state, but we're the ones that are providing the money, because the county has money in different departments, won't even spend it to make that happen. The reason why Senator Stern said what he said was because the county wasn't spending the money. And I would suggest that it's exactly opposite, because it's not working, what's happening, and we need to get in the process on paying for housing, and this new care courts the governor's doing, having a power to hold people, as well as training judges, and really creating a system that allows you to take people off the streets. And lastly, I would suggest that one of the big issues is about 20% of the people on the street have pets. If you just provide some space for the pets, which we've now done in the state, you dramatically provide incentive for people to get off the street.
Okay, Senator, thank you so much. Let's spend a little bit more time on this. Everybody here mentioned something related to housing. So let's dive into that just a little bit. Reminder, this is going to be a one minute, and any follow-up will be 30 seconds. So let's talk a bit about Prop HHH, approved by voters, a $1.2 billion bond. Senator Hertzberg, you talked about the money there. This is a bond, $1.2 billion, to create 10,000 new supportive housing units. But it looks like we're only going to make maybe 6,000 to 8,000 of those units. The average price is upwards of $600,000 per unit. Do we need to rethink this? First with you, Senator Stern.
I do think we need to rethink it, and we need a more diverse range of housing options that we pursue under HHH. We need to get the cost of the units down. I mean, if we need to build 500,000 affordable housing units in LA, and we're building them at $700,000 a pop, you're starting to talk not about billions, but into the trillions, right? I mean, this becomes unsolvable. And so what I'd like to see is us set a target to get costs down and to have transition housing options too, so that we're not only funding permanent supportive housing, but we're doing short-term, we're doing the tiny homes, like Hope of the Valley has done in Tarzana and Reseda, and got people off the streets and into housing and care right away, while we're building also the long-term housing solutions. But we need cheap, fast, affordable options right now, and I think it's important we put that on the table with the HHH dollars we have left. And I think it's also important that we don't go ask everyone to tax themselves again until we've spent all that money down, because people are stepping up. But I don't think we've done that job in government, so I don't think we've earned their right.
Councilmember Lindsay Horvath, what's, what are your thoughts?
Well, HHH is the city's measure. The county's measure was Measure H. And we need to make sure that whichever it is, that we're investing those resources in ways that people can see a meaningful difference in their own communities. In my city, we adopted an inclusionary housing policy, so at least 20% of every housing development that we build in our community is set aside for moderate, low, or very low-income people. That should at least be the standard. That should be the bare minimum. We need to do more. We need to make sure that we're creating more housing options that actually meet the need that exists and create housing with permanent supportive wraparound services. That's what's most needed in this moment. But we also need to protect people in the housing that they're in, that they can currently afford. We created a program that helps renters who would otherwise need to pay less or miss paycheck, and make sure that they had the resources they needed to stay in their housing. This wasn't something that we just created for COVID. This is a way of life in our community, and we need to expand these kinds of programs throughout Los Angeles County to protect people, because renters are very concerned about the lifting of the eviction moratorium.
Senator Hertzberg, your response.
Yeah, the answer, whether it's HHH or HH, produced last year $541 million of sales tax revenue. It's not enough, because even if it was perfect, it was perfect. It's still a fraction of what we need. So how do you solve that? What do you do beyond that? One, adaptive reuse, that we're now just doing now to change laws. What's adaptive reuse? We have all these see-through buildings, these commercial buildings, that people, you know, have moved out, and we can convert those to housing units pretty inexpensively. Two, ADUs, granny flats. We passed a bill on that and authorized this. In the San Fernando Valley, where I'm from, we've done over 10,000 granny flats in a very short order that are very cheap and inexpensive. The point that Senator Stern referred to was correct. Hope of the Valley, $22,000 a unit for tiny homes in the near term. And most importantly, I would suggest the idea of surplus land. If we in the government bought the surplus land from the locals and used that for housing, we can expedite the process dramatically and dramatically reduce costs for housing, because housing costs four things. One, it's the cost of the land. Two, it costs construction. Three, it's labor. And four, it's the financing and delay costs and fees and stuff. If you can take the land, which is the most expensive piece, and take that out of the equation, you dramatically change that, and Rand Corporation says that we can create between 72,000 and 132,000 units in Los Angeles County based upon the surplus land that we have.
You know, we hear about these ideas, and a lot of times, we've seen pushback from community members, from people in neighborhoods who not embrace tiny homes near their single-family homes. And then you mentioned the accessory dwelling units, those granny flats. With that additionally, people are concerned that it will lower the value of their single-family homes. So how do you address those concerns? And we'll begin with Senator Stern.
Well, I think, first of all, you don't densify areas that are dangerous to build in in the first place. So I would not be in favor of any new density in fire zones and high-fire zones, up narrow canyons, places that it's difficult to evacuate. That goes for, you know, McMansions as well as any other additional housing. I think it doesn't make sense to build there. I think it does make sense to build an infill and in spaces that are already occupied but not really being utilized. Think about all the retail and all the malls that have shut down. Think about all the opportunities for nonprofits to own this work. So I think we can pick our spots and do this work. But I think also, if we're doing a good job with services, and say, a tiny homes village is up and running with adequate services, security, and people feel like they're going to be staffed, people aren't just going to be handed a key, and people, and then they walk away. That's where this trust comes from. I think when you're talking about getting housing to people who urgently need it, but who may have addiction issues or may have mental health issues, you need to show the community that it's not just a, here's a key and walk away, that you're going to wrap around that. So I think we're earning trust in Reseda and Tarzana right now. We've seen really good reactions. There was an initial aversion to some of these units, but so far, the community's really embracing it, because you've got a good nonprofit running.
Okay, let's continue with this topic here. We want to keep it tight, about 30 seconds on this response. Let's talk a little bit about, if you believe this is an issue when it comes to homelessness, being financial, addiction, mental health. If a care court could help out, should people then be forced into treatment and to help? Let's start with Senator Stern.
Yes, in certain cases, people who have no capacity to help themselves and are literally going to die on the streets, that's not a civil liberty to die on the streets. That's no freedom at all. And so I do think in certain narrow circumstances, there does have to be some kind of compelled care. However, I don't think you need to go there right out the gates, and conservatorships are very, very expensive. What I'd like to see is us get away from 5150s and the 24-hour or 72-hour holds that are happening, but also not trying to lock people into multi-year conservatorships that'll cost taxpayers a ton and take away civil liberties for the long term. I'd like to see street medicine being applied, getting people stabilized on the street, and administering medication on the street itself, and then transitioning people into the kind of housing where they can actually accept those services.
All right, Councilmember Horvath.
Well, we've seen the impact of defunding mental health services over the decades, and not reinvesting in that care has caused the problems that we see on our streets. What we need to do is create the places where people can actually access and receive that care, and fully invest and fund those services. That's what people are looking for, and that's why they are left on the streets to languish without support, because they aren't connected to those services. So this isn't about compelling people. This is about making sure that those resources are available and that they're connected to the people who need them most.
Bob, you get this response as well?
Yeah, you missed me on the last one, but that's okay.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. It's no big deal. But I just want to say this, that, look, this Project Home Key, where we're paying for homes for people, we have $1.5 billion available in funding, and it's going to probably be more than that by the final budget to be able to pay for that stuff. You know, it's so frustrating to me, like, we need to do this, and we need to do that. How are you going to get it done? Where are you going to pay for it? Where's the money going to come from? What are you going to cut to make it happen? The answer on ADUs, by the way, just so, I want to give you something on the ADUs I just shared with you for a minute, Lori, that you asked, was, in the San Fernando Valley, they're expanding tremendously, and they bring value to people's homes. I'm going to probably build one in my backyard, and transit-oriented development has been wildly successful along the orange line. There's really great opportunities to do, to really build. It's a matter of just, and I think that you can deal with the communities. I've talked to a number of folks throughout the San Fernando Valley, where I am, and the rest of the county, and there's real opportunities. It's a matter of leadership, and I really think the idea of taking over commercial property is a really, really good idea. We have a bill now in the legislature, which I think will pass, and that will be part of our plan.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody, we are about 20 minutes left in this, so let's just make sure that we keep this going. I want to go now to crime, the next topic we want to discuss here. And just to give you some numbers to underscore this, it's a top of mind for voters in this election, and obviously, for good reason. A recent poll conducted by UC Berkeley found that 38% quoted a crime and public safety as their top priority. In 2019, there were 258 homicides. By 2021, that number jumped to 397 in LA, highest number of murders in nearly a decade. What are your plans to address crime in LA County? You have a minute, Senator Stern.
I think we need to get guns out of the hands of people who shouldn't be using those guns or prohibited from using them. The gun violence epidemic is taking over, and I've been through two mass shootings since being a senator, and I consider all these acts of mass shooting, whether it's at a school or a church or on our streets. So that needs to end, and we need to get tough on people who shouldn't be possessing those guns. I also think that we've got to have a more nuanced approach to prosecuting crimes. We passed a bill today to look at street racing and extreme speeding, where currently, people are getting a slap on the wrist, a misdemeanor from driving cars 100 miles an hour through our communities, often killing people and still not even facing manslaughter charges. So we've actually got to beef up in surgical cases, you know, not every case, but there does need to be. does need to be tougher prosecution in certain circumstances like extreme speeding and street, street racing and some of these property theft rings that we're facing. And then lastly, I would just say that we've, we've got to find some way to, to get past this argument of do we cut public safety resources or do we fund social services? We don't need to cut public safety resources right now. We don't need to defund the police right now. We can do both. We can have restorative care and adequate public safety services.
Councilmember Horvath.
We need to make sure law enforcement has the resources necessary to fight violent crime and we need to stop spending tens of millions of dollars on liability cases that the county sees and that all of the cities who contract with the sheriff's department are seeing. Right now, I chair the Liability Trust Fund Claims Board and Oversight Committee and I see all of those cases. We need to stop wasting this money on incidents that are, are reported to involve deputy gangs or asking law enforcement to respond to issues for which they are not uniquely trained. We need to make sure that we have the kinds of response that makes sense for the kinds of issues that people are facing and not escalating problems that cost us more in dollars and cents and potentially cost people's lives and the public trust. We need to do more and better to keep people safe and, and fund the services and support that will actually do that.
The topic is crime, Senator Hertzberg.
Yeah, I, I always like to offer a thought about the nature of the crime. Indeed, your point is correct with respect to murders, but I think which is creating such unsettled folks in what deals with this UCLA study that was the opening question about people being unhappy, is these, the nature of the crimes, the follow home crimes, the smash and grabs, the fear to go to the mall, the fear of going home and worrying about someone following you, it's, it's really challenging. I just want to say that of all the candidates in this race, I believe I'm accurate in saying this, I'm the only candidate that's received support of all the police departments, police associations, from City of San Fernando to the city of Beverly Hills, which I think is a statement about their confidence in my ability to get things done. I think we do need more police officers on the streets to create a deterrent in that regard. I think that's quite important. I do agree with Senator Stern on ghost guns. I just passed a bill today on that. It's an epidemic in Los Angeles, these guns that are used in gun violence, really quite important, working in partnership with the governor and I believe Senator Stern is also a co-author on that measure, which I always give everybody credit for. And so, you, you know, and the last thing is, I, I think the sheriff needs to be more accountable. We need to have an appointed sheriff. This idea of elected sheriff, I've been involved around a lot of years in the sheriff's office and it's just going off the rails. We need accountability in the sheriff's department and we need to have an appointed sheriff by, by a commission like the police commission coordinated by the board of supervisors.
You know, I think we heard a tinge in, in all of your responses right there that there seems to be a, a turn from some of the social reform protests we saw a few summers ago to now a tougher stance. Senator Hertzberg, you said we need more officers. Many saying, of course, there is a need for more cops, while there's, there's another part of the population that says that's the opposite of what we need. How do you balance the two ideals? And are there any parts of the defund the police movement that you would agree with?
Yeah, completely. First of all, there's, there's an honest fear, which is accurate, just like in certain communities, there's fears about the follow homes and the smash and grabs. In other communities, there's legitimacy about overpolicing. I spent seven years working on criminal justice issues where people in communities were really hurt, whether they were being held in jail because they couldn't afford to get out when other people could, whether they were being charged with crimes that they shouldn't be charged with. So that, they're absolutely accurate in that respect. But, but the, but what happens is it's training of the police. They want to be trained. It's how do you use them? Do you come in with the militarization and all the big boots and stuff? Or do you deal with the community policing, which in every community I've been has been just beautifully recognized, but at the same time being sensitive to the overpolicing, which is a very legitimate issue, which causes unbelievable consequences in that regard? I can talk about it in my minutes.
Yes, Senator Hertzberg, you jumped ahead. That's fine because we had you overlook the last one. Just want to remind everybody, this topic is about parts of defund the police that you would, would not support. How would you balance those ideas? Let's go now to Senator Stern and the next will be Councilmember Horvath. Senator Stern.
Well, I don't think the defund the police movement is, is the sort of sole leader of the reform movement. I think there's a powerful effort afoot throughout this country to, to restore justice for people who have been impacted by systemic racism and in cases of, of, you know, police misconduct and in some cases murder. And in those cases, we do need to hold officers accountable. You know, we, we, I voted on legislation at the state level to decertify certain cops or deputy sheriffs who commit serious crimes in the course of duty or even outside of that scope of duty. That's necessary. Those reforms have to happen. I don't think you need to defund in order to reform. I also think that getting adequate training, getting mental health services, getting post-traumatic stress injuries dealt with, those are all constructive things to be working on. And the last thing I'd say is the reform community, we, the folks pushing to close Men's Central Jail, I'm with them. I think we should be closing Men's Central Jail too. I think that place is, is a, is a pit and it's, it's caused too many suicides and too many lives for officers and for the inmates themselves. So there's so many elements of the reform movement that need to be retained and I don't think we should snap back from this new rising crime into sort of reversion to the days of old where we try to lock everybody up. That's not going to work. I just think we need abundance in the public safety service to then have an adequate police force, but, but not at the expense of people's rights or justice.
Councilmember Horvath, your response.
Well, I don't think we can trust someone who's endorsed by all of the law enforcement agencies to hold them accountable. What we need is somebody who has experience working with law enforcement, but also experience holding them accountable, and I am that person. I, as I mentioned, work in this capacity to oversee all of the deputy involved incidents and to deal with them with county council. I also work currently with the sheriff's department in my own community and I work with the sheriff's department countywide through the contract program. So I know the leadership within the department. I know how it works and I know where it doesn't work. That kind of experience is what we need day one from somebody who's taking this job if we're going to get the results that we need and if we're going to be able to bring people together, together to deliver the resources that are needed in community to keep people safe.
Can I respond?
Person positioned to do that.
Yeah, yes, just, just a second, just a second. Now, we did, you did mention that Hertzberg was responsible for all the police endorsements, so you can respond, Senator Hertzberg.
Yeah, thank you. The reason why they're supporting me is because I'm somebody who actually makes stuff happen. Councilmember Horvath claims that as a councilperson, because she wrote a letter, stopped, pulled all the rape kits. I spent 11 years building one of the largest crime labs in the country at Cal State LA to provide jobs and to coordinate with Cal State LA. I've worked with them and they trust me. The level, the brill that Senator Stern just referred to, that he voted on, I spent over 100 hours negotiating behind the scenes to make it happen, to figure out how we could do that with Senator Bradford. The point is the, the difference between the platitudes and that's the reason that they have a history and a trust. And I was, they were against me on bail, right? But they understood that I was all about people that were flight risk versus public safety risk and not, and people that were put in jail unfairly and not just to deal with the public safety issue. So I have a history where they've worked with me, they trust me, and that's the reason why they're supporting me.
Okay, Senator Hertzberg, you mentioned both of these candidates, so let's go back to Councilmember Horvath for your response.
Yes, thank you. As a woman in elected office, I'm not, I'm not unfamiliar with people trying to diminish the work that I've done, but actually I built a very strong, diverse coalition of hundreds of people who came together in a movement to deliver results on the backlog of untested rape kit evidence. I've worked with the state and federal government to get help holding our sheriff's department accountable. I've partnered with them where it's possible and I've also worked to hold them accountable. So you can try to diminish the work of community-based organizations, you can try to diminish the work of all of the women who came together demanding results from the city and county of LA, or you can understand that we actually came together and delivered results for 10 million people in a way that was very meaningful. And as a survivor, I'm kind of offended that you would go there.
So we're going to wrap this all, we're going to wrap this all up here and we're going to go to the response from Senator Stern before Lori has her next question with just about 10 minutes left. So Senator Stern, your response to Senator Hertzberg.
I, I would just say that you've got Councilmember Horvath, who's sort of deciding on cutting resources or how much to cut public safety resources within her West Hollywood budget, and then Senator Hertzberg, who's with the deputy sheriffs and, and has law enforcement support. Maybe I'm somewhere in between. And, you know, I don't think we should be cutting resources. I do think there should be accountability. I support men and women in uniform and public safety, but at the same time, you know, when people do bad things, no one should be above the law. So maybe I'm somewhere in between.
Thank you for your comments. The current board has been at odds with the current sheriff over a number of things, vaccine mandates, the budget, homeless. Sheriff Vianueva is up for reelection. He takes every opportunity to slam the board, frankly. Should he get another four years? And if he wins, how will you work with him? And we'll start first with Senator Stern.
I'm going to leave that up for voters to decide. I'm not endorsing in the, this primary election. I do think we need change and I'd like to either see Sheriff Vianueva adopt that change or someone else step up to do the job. We got to get past the politics. I mean, this is, this is really sacred work. When you look at, when people put on that badge and that uniform every day, they've got a target on their back and go out and do that work. And if we're getting trapped in this, this sort of posture match between the board and the sheriff, it's going to, the, the people of LA are the ones who are going to suffer as a result, as well as the rank and file officers. So, you know, I'd like to see all the antics get tamped down, no more cowboy hats and showing up for press conferences. I think the sheriff's capable of doing this. I want to see him put a better foot forward, but, but if the voters of LA want to go a different route and maybe take a, a different approach to public safety that's going to be a little less political, I'll work with whoever gets elected and, and I, I really, this is not the place to play politics. This is too serious.
Former mayor, your response?
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm prepared to work with whomever is elected, but this sheriff has not earned my vote. Just now, we are, just today, we're hearing that he's investigating a reporter for revealing information that was a cover-up of violence that happened in the department in the San Fernando Valley. I mean, we're investigating the press now because he doesn't like what they're reporting? That's absolutely absurd. That is the definition of playing politics and that's why he's got to go. We need somebody who actually takes public safety seriously. If he was doing such a good job, people would feel safe right now, but they don't. He is not providing the safety and security that people are looking for in their neighborhoods, period. We need somebody who's actually prepared to do that, who knows how to do it, who's willing to work hard within the department and also work collaboratively with the board of supervisors. There's a way to do it. It's been done in the past and we, we need somebody who's actually interested in, in working together and delivering results that keep people safe, not somebody who's looking to make headlines for his own political purposes.
The question is whether you can work with Sheriff Vianueva if he were reelected and we put that to Senator Hertzberg.
Yeah, the, the, the answer to that is yes, you have to. And the way you do it is this, because I've worked with the board of supervisors, I've represented as supervisor for many years, I've been on commissions and been around a long time. And there's this kind of eighth floor mentality where all the supervisors are in their offices surrounded by their big staffs. I go to the person's office, I'd sit down with them, try to find common ground. What really happens in the real world among human beings is when there's press releases and people are screaming at each other, they, they amp stuff up and their staff amps each other up. I got elected unanimously as speaker, first time in over 50 years. Why? Because I didn't mess with the other side. I didn't agree with them on things, but you treat them with respect. Now, clearly what this sheriff has done is quite challenging, no question about it. But it's all about how you approach stuff, how you deal with people and to try to, you know, if he gets elected by the voters, he gets elected by the voters and I'll figure out a way to work with them and find places that we can work together to serve the people of, of county of Los Angeles.
Well, before we go to closing remarks, I think we're just about that time to do that one-minute closing remarks. I want to thank all three of you for joining us tonight for this Meet the Candidates forum. I want to wish you all the best of luck because the election is coming up on June 7th. So let's start as we did, when we began with Senator Stern. You have one minute in closing remarks, Senator.
Thanks for the opportunity. Thanks for putting a spotlight on the county. We can't fix LA without LA County. And you may be looking at the mayor's race if you're out there watching or figuring out who your city council member should be, but if you don't train your eyes on the board of supervisors and force us to be accountable, then we're in trouble. And that's on homelessness, that's on crime, that's on environmental justice and everything from how your elders and loved ones are taken care of in nursing homes to, to what your kid's life is like at schools and whether they can play outdoors without a mask. These issues come up in everyone's life, but until you have to deal with county, you don't realize just how tough it is. I've, I've had that experience. I've had family in nursing homes. I now have family in my own care in my house, dealing with what it's like to be, you know, a working class 94-year-old Holocaust survivor who got forced out of his home. My father-in-law now lives with me. I'm looking out for Joshua and I'm looking out for my daughter and all the other people who were easily left behind. We need to get past this kingdom mentality with this board of supervisors and actually accept some responsibility and take heat. Go to the hard things and stop putting it all in the city. It's time for us to do the hard things too.
It is such a very important role and we'll turn now to you, Councilmember Lindsey Horvath.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity and, and you hosting this conversation tonight. I think what we don't need more of in our local communities is more of Sacramento and we don't need them telling us how our neighborhoods ought to be run. We need to make sure that we're actually meeting people where they are and delivering the services and support that they need. When I speak to folks in the valley, they tell me they're disappointed that they feel that they haven't gotten their fair share and that includes their current representatives. So what they're looking for is change and I am that change. I have, I'm the only one who's delivered on creating affordable housing options and delivering solutions on homelessness. I'm the only one who's working with the sheriff's department, both to hold them accountable and to deliver results to keep people safe. I'm the only one who's working at our, in our local communities to try and keep businesses open and keep, keep people in good jobs that afford themselves and their families a good quality of life. And, you know, making good on the promises of measures R and M, those ballot measures that people, you know, were willing to tax themselves to make sure that the transportation infrastructure, that all of the things that we need in LA County are paid for, we actually need to deliver on those promises.